Just to decide what you want to do was deliver the doors.
Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 9th. It's a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session where we were discussing personnel appointments. Our first matter on our agenda is a report presentation, uh, report, sorry, report and recommendation from the intermunicipal airport master plan task force regarding Westchester County's renewal of the Westchester County Airline Terminal Use Agreement, the TUA. So, um, just as a reminder, um, we had passed a resolution, I don't even know when, I apologize.
Um.
It could have been a couple of months ago.
January, I think it was.
Yeah.
It was January.
In January, we had passed a resolution forming the task force and asking other municipalities to join, of which they did. There have been a number of meetings to date. And now we're, um, lucky to be joined by John Mugno, who's gonna give us a little bit of a, a report from that, from that, um, task force. Please.
For, uh, those of you who don't know me, my name is John Mugno, you're correct. And, uh, I was one of the two people appointed by the board to be the Rybrook representatives on the municipal task force. The other representative on the task force from Rybrook is Peter Schlaktis, who unfortunately is not able to join us tonight. Uh, he has actually kind of followed airport issues for a decade or more. He is very knowledgeable, so I'll push any really difficult questions onto Peter and we'll get back to you tomorrow. All right, let me, let me just give a little bit of background. Uh, on the task force, there are seven municipalities. Each municipality appointed two representatives. Two of the 14 representatives are trustees of their municipality. And two of the members are on the county airport advisory committee. So we have a mix of kind of some very knowledgeable people about airport issues and some people who are knowledgeable about the political process in various municipalities. So this, I think, has been a very good thing. The intermunicipal task force has two goals. First goal is to review and comment on the master plan, which hasn't come out yet, as you all know. The second was to advise on issues of concern regarding the upcoming expiration date and renewal process of the TUA. The reason we're having you here with this resolution is because there's a need to act urgently. We didn't quite realize until June, our June meeting, that many of the municipalities have a very truncated meeting schedule in the summer. Some apparently have only one meeting. So we felt it imperative to get the resolution in everybody's hands so we could take action and get it in the, the resolutions, because I'd prefer to have many more than one, in the hands of the county so that they can begin their negotiations with the airlines. This is especially critical for the budget of next year. Because the budget for the airlines is due November 1st. And what we want to include in that budget, it's for discussion with the airlines due November 1st. What we want in that budget is a line item that gives some funding to the EMS. I will tell you that we raised this issue, thanks to Chris, who briefed me on it. We raised this issue in the committee, and many of them are not directly involved in this. But all of them saw the justice and reason of the request we were making. So there's no o- opposition as near as I can tell. Now, the next thing is, there are several other issues that the committee is gonna talk about when the municipal task force looks at the master plan. Those issues, just to let you know, are noise, air pollution, water management, the EMS annual payment, passenger experience, fixed base operations, and King Street traffic. The only one that's a bit of an outlier is King Street traffic. But you may hear about that later, because I think Portchester and Greenwich are going to want to approach Rybrook about what they regard as King Street traffic issue. So it's, it's kind of working to bring out in the municipalities, uh, issues and where they think they should be cooperating with one another. Now, the TUA resolution, the subcommittee's note, the subcommittee was, uh, Martha Montserrat from Roy City, Peter Schlaktis of Rybrook, and Jocine Alcente, who's a trustee in Portchester. The three of them put together that four-page document plus the draft resolution. And I think, uh, it's pretty, uh, pretty self-explanatory. But let me just go over a couple of key points, which are important for the resolution we're asking you to consider. The first is that scheduled airlines, which account for less than 20% of takeoffs and landings, all must sign a terminal use agreement. Secondly, the task force believes the current terminal use agreements, which are identical for each airline and which have been in effect, basically in this form, I understand, for something like 35 years, have been successful in limiting flights by scheduled commercial airlines using the main terminal. The committee decided that this was a very effective approach. It's worked for several decades, and there's danger in trying to challenge the underlying assumptions to that approach. So after some discussion within the task force, it was decided that the way the terminal use agreement works is good and it should be continued with some minor modifications. The minor modifications are that the tenor has been 10 years original term plus five, two five-year extensions at the option of the county. And the task force is proposing a 20-year original term. I've worked in finance my whole career. I have to say, somebody gives me a free option, I always take it. They have persuaded me that a 20-year original term would be better for the communities than having the option exercised, basically because you don't know what the circumstances will be when there's a, the five-year period needs to be exercised. So they decided they'd prefer not to run that risk. And recent lease agreements with the fixed base operators, that's like Net, uh, Net, or not, NetJets and others like that, and JP Morgan, for example, the corporates. Those leases have been recently signed for 30 years. So we're not talking about something that's out of the question. The second issue the, uh, task force would like to see pursued is that there be a uniform terminal use agreement for every airline, the duration uniform for every airline, whenever an airline signs up. They believe it's not to the county's advantage to have them all, as they do today, expire on the same day. They would prefer they be staggered. The third point is, airlines under the current terminal use agreements agree not to challenge the TUP, that's Terminal Use Procedures, which is the law that governs the terminal use agreements, during the period it is in effect and for 30 days afterward. They propose changing the 30 days to 90 days. And then finally, uh, they all proposed we add an annual payment for EMS services to the airline costs that they're already paying. And that, I can ask, ask, hopefully answer your questions, but that's the summary of what we're looking to do.
Great, thank you. No, we really appreciate all the work that's gone into this, um, from, from you and Peter, but also from the other six municipalities that have participated in this. I think this is, uh, something that's for the benefit of all the communities around here. I think, um, everyone in, I, you know, I, I would imagine that most people in Rybrook and, and the surrounding communities, um, like the way that the airport is run currently. Um, we're very lucky to have the TUA and the ability to put it in place. And it's, um, one of the few, if not the only, if I believe, uh, airport, uh, in the country that's able to have those protections, um, because they're grandfathered in, which is, we're very lucky to have.
You don't want to rock it too much, yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to rock it too much. And again, it was my understanding when the, when the previous county administration was looking to change some of this, that any changes to the TUA could potentially allow the FAA to come in and, and negate it. So, um, we, we certainly want to protect this TUA as much as we possibly can. Um, and again, for the benefit of, of the surrounding communities. Um, you know, I've, I've read this. I'm, I personally don't have any questions. Um, I think, you know, the addition of a potential EMS charge would be, uh, something great that, that, um, you know, as, as has been noted, you know, it's, it's, um, are, it's the Portchester, Ry, Rybrook EMS that's making a lot of the calls to, to the airport. And so, um, being able to get some compensation for that, um, for an, an expense that's being shared solely among those three communities, um, would be, would be something beneficial to help alleviate those costs.
Let me interrupt for a second, just to say that that was discussed in the task force. And everyone in the task force from all the communities thought it was a good idea. They saw it as a matter of justice.
Yeah, bless you. And it really is. I mean, that's, that's something that's, you know, that's, that's serving a, a community outside of those three, so.
If I could just add a couple of items that's factual. So the, and the EMS, and EMS payment would not be borne by the general Westchester County taxpayers because it's from funds raised at the airport. That's the way their budget has to work in that regard. But there are, as John said, there's such, so many important things in the terminal use agreement. A couple of the ones that are just mentioned, so this covers any airline that sells tickets to the public for any airline, any airplane that has at least nine past, nine seats. So that's pretty much any, any size of, you know, any substantial-sized airport, aircraft that goes out of the main terminal. The, also limits the main terminal to four gates, which is a very important restriction. And the other thing that's probably, one of the biggest, uh, items is it limits it to 240 passengers per half hour, except for certain peak holiday periods. So that, was that, that's, um, it limits it both arriving and, and leaving the airport. How many, how many planes could be there, how many can be, um, using the gates, and how many passengers can be on them. There's a lot of other things in it too, but those are some of the key factors that really come into play with the, the use agreement.
Chris?
There is a good point.
Chris, is the 240, isn't that the number now also?
That is the number now.
Yes.
Just to add to what you said, if you saw the Westmore News, uh, last week's edition, they had an article on JSX, which had been challenging the terminal use procedures because it wanted to run bigger aircraft out of the fixed base operation terminals.
Yep, and there's litigation that was involved between the county and those operators.
A federal court decided that the county had the, uh, correct approach.
Which is, which is definitely beneficial. I mean, otherwise it would have opened up, you know,
Bypassing the TUA's.
Yeah, operators, you know, acting almost as commercial airlines, even though, you know, they're, I guess, the registered not, as not. Any other questions from the board? I know we have a resolution on this. Any questions about the presentation, and then we'll move into the resolution.
I would just like to thank you for a really excellent presentation. It was clarifying, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, and again, just thank you to, to yourself, to Peter, and everyone else on that task force. It's, um, you know, it's, it's never easy looking into these things, especially when you're looking into long documents, um, you know, and, and trying to represent so many varied communities in a uniform voice. Um, and I think that the creation of this task force, um, is, is important because it also shows, uh, the county and those operating the airport how important this is to those communities. And it's, and, and just sort of ones where also other communities were invited, some declined to participate.
But I think it's great that there's seven communities in two different states that are, that are working together.
Greenwich is on.
Pretty, pretty incredible. And, and as I understand, everybody, everybody found it to be a really good, um, task force so far to, to serve on. And there's a lot more ahead. They're gonna be doing a tour of the airport for anyone that's available and learn more about it. And then there'll be another part, as John said, working on, uh, issues regarding commenting on the master plan.
Master plan, yeah.
Which we'll have a little more lead time on.
As you said, be flooding, uh, I know, like, Ry is very concerned, as we are, with flooding issues and stormwater, as well as all the other issues and noise and traffic, as you said, all the different issues that are, that were mentioned earlier.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I often, and as I was just saying to John before the meeting, I often, and that I've set up here, I often make the argument that I believe there's no other community that the airport has a bigger effect on than Rybrook. That the stormwater from the airport flows directly into Rybrook, uh, which is why we get the smell of the de-icing fluids during the winter. Um, the, you know, no other municipality has, uh, residences within a quarter mile of the runway on the flight path. And so it's, it's, and, you know, a lot of other issues, you know, there's, um, you know, clearly anything that happens at, at the airport has a direct effect on Rybrook. And so it's, it's imperative that, um, you know, and, and why we've always had an, an airport advisory board, um, within the village, um, but why we also, um, see fit to, to take on things like this.
And I think it is important to make the distinction. So I, like, I got asked actually the question earlier today. You know, what about the stormwater? What about the noise? What about the other? And I said, that's still very serious issues, but those are a separate issue than the terminal use agreement, uh, matters.
Yeah, those are, those are related more to the master plan and the operations. This is specifically about the commercial airlines and their use of the airport.
Yes.
The woman who did the bulk of the drafting on the resolution is from Ry City. You asked the Ry City people, we asked everybody, list your three issues on the airport. Ry City's issue is water, water, water.
Yeah, yeah, yes, clearly. And, and to that, you know, you know, from the airport flows into the Blind Brook. And, you know, as we're, we're well aware, the village of Rybrook is taking many and drastic steps to try and reduce downstream flooding, including the buyout program that is progressing. And many others, you know, we're looking into stormwater storage. We're looking into, um, a lot of areas along, along the Blind Brook as well. Well, thank you for your report.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's move, let's, Chris, let's move right into the resolution.
Whereas on January 23rd, 2024, Rybrook appointed representatives Peter Schlaktis and John Mugno of, to serve on the intermunicipal airport master plan task force, comprised of representatives of the city of Ry, the village of Rybrook, village of Portchester, town of Greenwich, town of Newcastle, and town of North Castle. And whereas the task force has met on four occasions in 2024 to deliberate on community concerns related to the operations at the county airport. And whereas the task force has unanimously voted in favor of reaffirming the substance of the existing terminal use agreements, signed with the airlines, which expire on December 31st, 2024, pursuant to the 2004 Westchester County Terminal Use Procedures Law, as successor and complement to the 1994 Westchester County Airport Terminal Capacity Affirmation and Extension Agreement. And whereas the task force unanimously supports adjusting the terminal use fees, terminal operating costs, and ground handling service fees contained in the TUA to represent current cost to the county. And whereas the task force unanimously supports the compensation of costs for EMS service provided by the Portchester Ry, Rybrook EMS, uh, Emergency Medical Services. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook adopts the findings of the task force related to the TUAs and recommends that Westchester County negotiate at its earliest convenience new TUAs with all commercial airlines operating at the airport with the following provisions. One, TUA terms of 20 years or more, possibly with extensions if deemed appropriate by the county, but not less than 10 years with two five-year extensions. Two, TUA terms of a uniform duration for all TUAs as opposed to single expiration date. Three, a provision that extends the airline's agreement not to challenge the validity or legality of the TUP for 90 days following the expiration of the TUAs. Four, fees and costs enumerated in the current TUAs adjusted to reflect current costs. We leave it up to the discretion of the county whether to include the compensation of EMS costs to the EMS organization as part of the revised TUA or through some other mechanism.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
And again, this is just, this resolution shows a report of the, uh, shows our support of these findings. Um, and, and I'm assuming, Chris, this gets sent to the county along with any other resolution that other municipalities are passing.
Yep, will be sent over to county administration and the county legislator, board of legislators. Uh, but we're gonna bunch them together with some other ones as well. Uh, I know at least one of the communities going next week already, so, yeah. So they're starting to move on it, which is, which is good news.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments about the resolution from the board?
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Morelino?
Yes.
And Mayor Clark?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, John. And again, thank you to every participating member of the task force.
And while John's here, we should thank him for all his efforts on Rybrook Focus, too.
Yeah, that too.
To how many episodes? 20, how many episodes?
We've got over 25.
Over 25 episodes, which is just incredible. And, uh, really topical interest, please encourage residents to go and take a look at, at our website. And there's links to YouTube where all 25 or so episodes are on of various topics from, um, community leaders to, um, people within government, people outside government. But it's a good way to just, uh, find out about topical issues about the community. And meet those people. Thank you, John. And they're all, what, about a half, 20 minutes to half hour?
20 to 40.
20 to 40 minutes, so a reasonable duration. There's nothing on Netflix anyhow anymore, so, you know, it's time to try a different show.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John.
I seem to be losing my connection. Yeah. Something's going on.
Sure, you want me to read?
No, so I, I have the, I have the agenda here. I'm just having trouble loading up the resolution itself. So resolution number two, consider a request for an exemption/extension of Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for 699 Westchester Ave., the former Westchester Hilton property.
Whereas on April 11th, 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a local law enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st through September 30th, effective May 1st of this year. And whereas the Village Code, uh, under the Village Code, properties with at least five acres can apply for a full or partial extension or exemption of the local law. And whereas an application has been distributed to known eligible properties in the village and also placed on the website. And whereas on July 4th, uh, Janila Bahardi of 699 Westchester Avenue, the former Westchester Hilton property, submitted an application for exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Now therefore be resolved, after consideration of the intent of the local law as well as considerations raised by the application from representatives of 699 Westchester Avenue, the village of Rybrook hereby either approves or denies the request for the exemption enacting a leaf blower ban, ban at 699 Westchester Avenue through September 30th of whatever year, if it's granted, and if there's any conditions. So it's kind of an outline of a resolution that was for the board to discuss.
All right, thank you, Chris. And we'll hold off on the resolution. I noticed that you skipped over the typo.
Yes.
We'll get that fixed, we'll get that fixed in the actual resolution along with the wording. And we have a representative from 699 Westchester? All right, please.
My name is Juan Almonte. I represent Janila. It's, um, vacation right now, so. And, uh, the point is, um, we have, uh, I know you have, you board is, um, the town has got the issue with the leaf blower. Uh, the problem is, um, we have a, um, 7.5 acre. Uh, so right now we have, um, the hotel is closed, but we have, um, really huge, uh, public area. So, and then, um, Bobo Tennis Court, a lot of people coming every day. And, uh, I'm here because I'm Mr. Monchera and say, yes, he can come. And, uh, we have a, uh, lip, uh, battery. It's not enough for the used place. And we have a weed wagon to the battery. Actually, it's not working. Look at, um, this is the map for the property. And then all the yellow, it's, uh, open area. So, and when you pass by there, you see the, you cannot see the building because of, is, uh, really, I have a lot of tree there. And for now, we try to clean it with the, uh, electrical blower around the building only. So this is only I can do now with the, um... And you know, this is, uh, their own company, though, landscaping company, only three people. And we have, uh, the electrical equipment now. And we try to apply for the, maybe, I don't know, two years. And then after that, we can, working in the, the big equipment. For now, I don't know. Sorry, I'm nervous.
That's okay, and don't, and don't be nervous. We've, we've actually seen a number of these, so. Um, and just as a, just as a couple of quick questions. You said you have a few electric leaf blowers that we use?
Yes, we have a, we got three, we have three guys working, and then each one had one.
Of the electric?
Yes.
Not the gas power? And you're using those currently?
Yes, I use that one around the building only because the battery is not...
And then you're using, you're, you're, you're applying so that you can use the gas ones in the parking areas?
Yeah, for clean the rest of the building, you know.
So, all right, so around the buildings, though, you're looking, you're using the electric?
Yes.
Okay, and, all right. Um, I mean, my personal opinion, I think, is just to grant the one year. I mean, it's kind of not doing much at this point because it's already July. Um, I would just suggest to the owner of the company that next year maybe apply for this back in, like, February or March, so that you're, you're, you know, that we're able to get you on the agenda prior to, you know, because now it's already July and it's kind of, um, you know, this is really only in effect from, uh, May through, uh, the, the end of September. And then once you hit the leaf season, uh, the gas powers are allowed in the village. Um, and, and also for the spring cleanup. Um, certainly any other questions or comments from the board?
I just, how many days a week do you work on the property?
On this property, uh, before, after the, we can use the, um, gas blower. We use it two days, back and front. So now we have to use three and a half day for finish, uh, clean the property. You know, it got a lot of, for example, 113, King Street. So we're ready, we do the property too. And, you know, with, uh, electric is, and as possible, finish on one day or two days. Because the battery is, um, adding up.
There aren't too many neighbors will be affected by the noise.
No.
Yeah, yeah, the neighbors aren't nearby, which is nice. Can I ask a clarification? When you say you use the electric around the building, what do you use? I know in the back, there's the patio and the, towards the pool. So is it just the front area or the, only the front? Okay. I know the back is a big, pretty big back.
We buy the two battery, uh, spare for each blower. It's only get 40 minute, two battery and, you know.
Right. Understood.
So to clarify, it's the front of the building that they're using the electric?
Yeah.
Because the back is pretty, um, there's a big area in the back.
Big area in the back, right. All right, questions? I mean, I, I mean, my personal opinion is to grant a one year.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I get a, all right, so, um, can I get a motion and a second, please?
Want me to read what you're doing?
Yeah, can you, sorry, can you read it as?
Okay, I think, tell me if the board, if this is correct. So, whereas after consideration of the intent of the local laws, both the considerations and the application, the representatives of 699 Westchester Avenue, um, in the village, the Board of Trustees... village, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request for exemption of the village code enacting the leaf blower ban for Six-Ninety-Nine Westchester Avenue through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, which is a one-year, because it ends then.
Correct.
With the following conditions, it's going to be that the electric shall, electric blowers shall continue to be used around the front of the building.
Yes, sir. Sound okay?
In the front, adjacent to the building.
Yeah, so, so what this does is it gives you the exemption just through September thirtieth of this year, but then gas-powered leaf blowers are allowed again until May of two thousand twenty-five. So then, in February or March of two thousand twenty-five, I would suggest that you come a little earlier, you can apply if you need be, but I mean, for all we know, by then you've switched over to all-electric and everything's working well, and you don't need to come for that.
Yes.
That would be our hope, but again, if you need to apply for another exemption, come in February or March, and then it would be considered by the board whether to grant or deny that, and we'll, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Does the resolution, all right, sound okay? All right, can I get a motion and second on the resolution, please?
Motion. Second.
All right, Greg?
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution Number Three, Considering The Appointment Of A Police Officer.
Now therefore be resolved that Darren Sukennikoff of Valley Cottage, New York, is hereby conditionally appointed to position a police officer with the Village of Rybrook, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York, and according to the offer letter dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, be further resolved the annual salary is sixty thousand nine eighty-three with an effective estimated start date of July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Chief, do you want to say anything?
Sure. Darren came to us from New York City Police Department. He's the first person we're taking as a transfer from New York City Police Department under the change in New York State law that happened this year. Still contingent appointment, we still need to send all this paperwork up to Westchester County personnel for approval, but we're hoping that we'll have that taken care of soon. He went through his medical and passed that, so we're looking forward to having him there. He's a detective with eight years on, and he worked in the intelligence unit in counterterrorism in New York City, so it'll be a culture shock for him.
Yeah.
How'd I do on the last name? Sukennikoff?
Did I just call him Darren?
All right.
And, you know, and we're very happy to be, to be welcoming him to the, to the force. I'm assuming once everything gets cleared through, we'll have a chance to meet him?
Yeah, you have a couple of people to meet, so.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, Trevor also, so I'm just trying to wait for Trevor to be working on the P-Tour when there's a meeting night to get him up here to meet him, Trevor Burns.
Right. Does, and, and for this officer, I'm just curious, I mean, do we have to special order the name? I mean, that's, does it fit?
It would.
All right. Well, we're, we're very excited. I mean, from everything I've heard, he seems like a very competent officer, just someone who is going to fit in well on the police force, really bring a, the, a great level of professionalism, and we're, we're very excited to have him join us.
Yes, yes, he's, he came highly recommended by a few of my colleagues in the New York State Chiefs Association, so, you know, I'm very happy to be able to bring him aboard.
Great, well, we look, we look forward to officially welcoming him in the near future.
Greg, quick question, we didn't allow transfers before?
New York City, New York City police officers could not transfer out of New York City. We had to hire New York City police officers off the civil service list, but the law changed in two thousand twenty-four.
And what was the reason for the city to do that, put that restriction?
They were trying to.
Losing people?
They were trying to prevent badge drain.
Ah.
So I don't understand, it's very, it's very, it's puzzling why New York City, did New York City-centric legislature and New York State allowed this law to pass?
Oh, this law?
But we're glad because.
Yeah, it helps, it helps all these rivalries.
Increase the pool of candidates for us.
Yeah, tremendously.
Absolutely.
Tremendously, yeah. Good, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you, and we again congratulate Darren and look forward to welcoming him to the force. All right. Resolution Number Four, Considering The Appointment Of A Fire Training Officer Part-Time.
Now therefore be resolved that Richard Dempsey of One Thirty-two Bradley Road, Scarsdale, New York, is hereby appointed to position of fire training officer part-time for the Village of Rybrook, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York, and according to the offer date, letter dated July fifth, two thousand twenty-four, be further resolved that the compensation for this position is forty-five dollars per hour with an effective start date of July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion and second?
Motion.
So moved.
We're certainly familiar with this resolution, Chris, is there anything you wanted to give back?
No, he's, he's done, this is, for a number of years as a consultant for us, he's done a great job, and we think we have an excellent training program for the Rybrook firefighters, and, but now he, due to civil, so, New York State, as a retiree in New York State, you know, he needs to now become an employee, and we need a section two-eleven waiver also from New York State in order for him to be able to continue.
Great.
A two-eleven waiver is basically saying, as a retiree, he can continue to work without the income restrictions that New York State puts in place.
All right. No questions, comments from the board?
No.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, and thank you, we appreciate the continuing services. All right, Resolution Number Five, Considering Rejecting Contract Twenty-Four-Oh-Nine Exterminator Service.
Whereas the village has solicited bids for contract twenty-four-oh-nine exterminator service for the Village of Rybrook Properties, and whereas the bid for contract twenty-four-oh-nine was advertised in the Westmore News on June seventh, was also made available on the Empire Estate Purchasing Group. And whereas on June twenty-fourth, at ten-thirty, the following bids were opened in Rybrook Village Hall for contract twenty-four-dash-oh-nine, we received four bids, one from Pestech Pest Solutions, another from Veganix Pest Management, another from Parkway Pest Services, another from Shore Shot Pest Control. They ranged in price, total price, this is covering Village Hall, the Firehouse, AJP Center, and the Public Works Parks Facility, and the prices in the bids range from fifty-eight thousand two hundred to a hundred and six thousand eight hundred. Now therefore be it resolved that because the lowest bidder did not provide a bid bond or certified check, and the other bids were higher than the budget allowance for the service, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby rejects all bids for contract twenty-four-oh-nine exterminator service.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Well, what's the next step, so we rebid?
Yes.
We republizize?
Wait, can I ask a question? So when you say they didn't provide a check?
Mm-hmm.
Is that like something that they normally would do? Like, was there a reason?
Yes, so when we do the bid openings, the first things we look for is to see if it was required, which it is on, on pretty much every bid, they either required to have a bid bond or a certified check to guarantee that they will perform the work. Sometimes that can be corrected if it's done in a very short order, in this case, it couldn't be done, so the, we, the board really could not issue the lowest bidder, the bid, without that requirement. So, in this case, another person also didn't have the bid bond, by the way, they didn't provide it, and the other ones were much higher in price.
That was a high bid.
And the prices were much higher.
Is that something that's difficult to get?
No.
Oh.
No, it's reasonable, it's not that expensive.
And it, and obviously, we don't want to enter into contract with someone who's not able to provide that.
Want to make sure they can guarantee this, they're going to, and then we return, you know, well, if they provided, we, you know, it's all returned after the bid.
Right.
Except for the one who gets awarded the bid.
Right. Right. Any other questions?
And if, beyond that, I'm referring to Stephanie on this one, since she's here tonight.
Any other questions or comments on that?
As always, I am fascinated by the differential between high and low.
Yes.
It's as if they were bidding on two completely different contracts.
Yep.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you, and we hope we can get the next one hopefully within budget, and otherwise we may have to rebudge. All right. Resolution Number Six, Considering A Fiscal Year Twenty-Four Budget Transfer And Recognizing The Receipt Of Grant Funding For A Fiscal Year Twenty-Four Capital Project For Police Body Cameras.
Now therefore be resolved that the following two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four year-end budget, general fund budget transfers be approved, and there's a listing of various transfers of various amounts to basically cover areas of the budget that were over-expended with areas that were under-expended, and this is done, and for the purpose of this is to, for auditing purposes, to make sure that the accounts are funded, again, you're funding areas that were, didn't have the funding with areas that have funding. So those transfers take effect, a copy of the resolutions on our website and on the backup for the agenda. Be further resolved that in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, New York State grant funds in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for police body cameras was received and deposited into the general fund, and that the following fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, budget modification be approved to reappropriate general fund unassigned fund amounts to fund the established fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four capital project police body worn camera replacements into, into that account, that capital account. So what you have here, in short, is a sixty thousand dollar transfer, basically, we received grant funding for these cameras and we expended it, so you just have to be able to account for the revenue and the expenditure for that purpose.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have to say, it's a good thing we trust you and Trish.
Any questions asked, because it's there, we can explain it. It's why we clean, it's why the audits are very clean.
It's why the audits, it's reasons like this that the audits are very clean year after year.
And in this case, and that's what happened in this case, we, the revenue we received in the prior fiscal year.
Right.
Got it pushed to the next fiscal year of the project, so we had to record that revenue out of the general fund receipt and put it into the capital project the next year.
Right.
And the other ones are just balancing your books at the end of the fiscal year.
Right, which is extremely important to do, again, in regards to the auditing, but also the stress test, and really.
And for the public's purpose, we can transfer within accounts, we being departments, and through the department request through the treasurer and the administrator, but the board has to approve any fund transfers between accounts. So these are funds that are between accounts.
Any questions or comments?
Transfer away.
The ice cream account.
All right.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. All right, and an add-on resolution, Resolution Number Seven, Considering Awarding Contract Twenty-Four-Ten School Buses For Swim Dates.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has solicited bids for contract twenty-four-dash-ten buses for various summer camp trips, school buses. And whereas the bid was advertised in the Westmore News on June twenty-first and made available in the Empire State Purchasing Group bid system, and whereas at ten AM on Tuesday, July ninth, all bids were received, were opened and summarized below, we received one bid from the company that's currently providing the service for us, and this is for the County Coach Corp. in the amount of ten thousand four hundred dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees have determined the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the requirements of the contract documents, is County Coach Corp., Thirty Nursery Lane, Rye, New York, for the bid amount of ten thousand four hundred. Be further resolved the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution. Before you move in second, Michael, was this put on the bid system or not?
I did do this.
Would that have been rec, would have put it on directly or not?
I believe Kathy did it.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure she would normally do it or direct, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it's all good?
All good?
Yeah, I just want to make sure if not, we could have taken that part out.
Okay. All right.
I think she all moved it.
Okay.
All right, so can I get a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And this is, these are for the, for both rec camps, or is this just for the?
Just for the buses for the pool.
Just for the buses for the pool, so it's, it's not the travel camp?
No, this is, those were all bid out separately already and approved by the board.
That's what I figured.
So these were, these, because we were already over the bid amount, the camp ones had to be bid out separately as an additional, because they weren't included in the first bid.
Right.
So this is additional, and I think we do, because ten thousand four hundred would have been okay, but the problem was, we already did another bid, so cumulatively, it's over.
Right, it's over.
So again, staying out of trouble.
Okay.
The, yeah, so.
Once or twice a week, we go over there?
I think it's three days a week.
Three days a week?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and just as a reminder, we previously have a separate resolution where we entered into an IMA with the, with the Carver Center in order to provide pool time there, where we're paying for the lifeguards, and they get time at.
Campers get time at Carver Center, the pool, and they get time at Garibaldi.
They get time at Garibaldi.
Yeah, which is very nice, and.
It's a great relationship, and we really appreciate it.
These days that they're at the camp, my understanding is they go back and forth all day for different groups, age groups and all, so basically, I get the buses for the day.
Right, and I'm glad we're able to use a local bus company. Questions or comments?
No.
All right.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you, administrators report.
Can just have a few items. One is just an update on the NRCS buyout, recovery buyout program. So we have four properties right now that are almost ready to go to closings, we'll probably be doing up to, either definitely two, if not four, in August closing, so we've asked for advancement of funds for those purposes, because they're much larger amounts than we would normally put out and be reimbursed for. So the purchasing price is something that gets advanced, and then the other costs we get reimbursed for after the closing. And again, a hundred percent coverage for the public that we get reimbursed for. We have two on Brook Lane, one on Watman and one on Rock Ridge, that are all, out of the four that are first to go, so it's kind of even spread out, which is kind of nice, showing the interest, how everyone on different areas really have that need. Summer hours for, for village offices and our community center, senior center, are in July and August, starting this week, so Fridays, they'll be, we'll be closing the buildings at two PM, we've been trying to put that information out there so the public is aware. This is a trial period for this year, and we'll see how it goes, but the staff have adjusted their schedule, and now we'll be getting out at two o'clock in July, the balance of July and the month of August. Recycle Coach is something that we put in an email blast, I don't know if everybody picked up on it, but it's funny, those that downloaded that app on their phone, called Recycle Coach, said, wow, that's a great app, it's really nice to have on my, on my phone, which is fantastic. This is an app that Westchester County put out and is available to all municipalities, which we participate in, and Greg Gravera, Michael Noack, Jessica Cockentieri, have all been working to put the data into this app that the county provided, and then we, residents are able to just sign up, download the app, Recycle Coach, and you're able to get the sanitation schedule, you're able to get your holiday reminders when the dates are changing, you could ask questions like, you know, is this recyclable, whatever, you're asking a particular product, because people aren't sure, you know, is styrofoam recyclable, and all those things, and they even have little quizzes, like if you want, you know, is this recyclable or not, or, but it's sanitation, our bulk, our recycling, everything is on there, green waste, so if anybody just wants a nice little app and a nice reminder of holiday weeks, it's a, it's a nice app for people to consider. And it's free. And user-friendly, yeah, it's built for phones, so it's a, it's a nice app, I see everybody on their phones, old three-year-old downloading the app.
I'm doing it, yes, that's what we're doing. Recycle Coach, doing that right now.
What's up?
I posted about it.
And user-friendly, yeah, it's built for phones, so, it's a, it's a nice app. I see everybody on their phones, hopefully you're all downloading it.
I'm doing it, yes, that's what we're doing. Recycle Coach, doing that right now.
What's up? Yeah, and I put it on, on my phone, it's fantastic, it really is, I put it on myself.
What is the name of the app?
Recycle Coach.
Recycle Coach.
Yep.
Recycle Coach.
And, um, I asked Greg to give an update on the events that are coming up. We have a lot of events in July, it's like events on steroids in July, so, ask Greg to kind of go through what we have.
That it most certainly is, and I'm gonna steal a little bit of your thunder, because I want to mention twice that the concert series starts tomorrow night...
Yep.
In Pine Ridge Park, Andrea and the Armenian Rug Riders.
Armenian Rug Riders, yep.
But I'll just then start piggybacking off of that. Yes, as the mayor said, tomorrow, the 6:45 to 8:45 PM, there is, potentially talk is some rain in the forecast, but if that doesn't mean the case, then we will postpone it to the following day, same exact time, same location. The, this Friday, we have our second Ice Cream Friday, remember, we do them every Friday in July, and there will also be other dates, just to probably just mention those, July 19th and July 26th, but, uh, please keep in mind that this Friday, in addition to the Ice Cream Friday, we also have our first of three movie nights, which will be under the boardwalk, that will be around 8:15, and then Ice Cream Fridays are always about 6:00 to 7:30. On July 20th, we have our, um, food truck event from about 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, we have several different food trucks lined up, and do want to thank, uh, Liz Rotfeld for that, for her work on coordinating all those trucks, and while I did say, also wanted to give a shout out and thank you to our recreation staff, as well as our parks and highway staff, all the work that they've done, also helping prepare for these events, because a lot of work that, um, the public doesn't see, and, um, as the administrator always says, we're a small but mighty crew, so I definitely wanted to appreciate them for all their hard work. Uh, moving forward, July 24th, our next Music in the Park concert series, um, you know, the mayor did start briefly mentioning that, um, again, there always will be at Pine Ridge Park, but about starting on 6:45, that one will be Logical Pretzel, Steely Dan, um, July 20th.
The Steely Dan Band, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Steely Dan Tribute.
Yes, and then, um, July 27th, we'll have, uh, hopefully a couple of events that day, we'll, from that 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, we'll have our annual tag sale, which I've been coordinating with the Sustainability Committee. Um, again, just a quick reminder in that, for those who haven't participated yet, is that the way it works is that you participate at your own address. However, I do want to mention that some of the HOAs in Rybrook do not allow it, so if that's the case, or some residents, for one reason or another, just do not want to use